Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting on January 7th, 2019 at 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM here in the Town Hall. The agenda for tonight is to review minutes from previous meetings, to review some mail, to take some public comment, and then we've got a few, well, then we have a public hearing, and it's a site plan review and special permit application for a proposed cannabis cultivation facility on agricultural land located at 198 Mill Village Road, current location of Pioneer Gardens, as well as budding properties at 196 and 200 Mill Village Road, Assessors Map 94, and this is a public hearing that's continued from the previous meeting. Then we'll do a, we'll have a site plan review, review a revised submission for installation and operation of a ground-mounted photovoltaic facility on 20 acres of land at 100 Railroad Yard Road, and we'll set a date for a public hearing for that. Then we'll do another site plan review and special permit application, that is to review applications submitted by Deerfield Naturals, LLC, for a retail manufacturing and cultivation marijuana establishment to be located at 10 Greenfield Road, and we'll set a date for a public hearing for that. Then we've got some, just some announcements about other items, including a letter from Lascotti Development, a request for public records, a request for comment on a non-conforming structure at Six Coats Ave. Then we'll take up any business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this, we'll set a date for the next meeting, and we'll adjourn hopefully prior to the end of all the sporting events that are going on outside of this meeting. And with that, I wish everyone a Happy New Year, and let's go through, we can say who we are here on the planning board, we have a, almost a full.
John Verona.
Rachel Blain.
I'm John Waite.
Kip Kamosa.
Paul Ellis.
Max Antis.
So we have six out of seven of us are here, and we have some minutes from the December 10th meeting, is our last one, alright? Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
It'll take a minute to look at that.
Paul, you didn't add the reviewer, the soil scientist on here.
It's on there.
She's there, where?
I almost went crazy.
Which one are you talking about? The one, peer review one?
Yeah, but that's on the backside here.
On the backside of public comment?
First page?
Oh, cat, but I see her. Soil science, soils scientist, got it.
Yeah, that came under public comment.
Yep, 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 I just didn't see her name. And then Austin Turner.
And I got the numbers wrong on the front here.
Yeah, some of those.
It's not 33 square feet, it's, it's 33,000 square feet, I believe, 33K and 140K.
I'm not sure that has to be in the minutes, um.
Okay.
It's in the application.
That we don't have to worry about. So, we want to get Arjun. Arjun's name, right? That's not his last name.
Did I spell it wrong?
Yeah. I'm gonna check spelling, yeah.
I move to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2018. Give me a second.
Second.
So I've just got a bunch of, mostly typos, I think, and just words here and there, I don't think it changes the meaning to anything.
If you mark that one up, we'll give that one to Priscilla.
Yeah. Except for that one that you pointed out, Paul, is a...
Yeah, a couple of things I have, on the first page, where it says they have 47 licenses in states, probably should say something about Harvest Sun Mass there, because it's not...
We don't know who they are.
We don't know who they are, and then I think it's 33,000 square feet and 140, I think I left the K's out there.
Would that be more appropriate?
Yes. Yeah, okay.
Alright, we can get that correction quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, this is all just discussion, it's not anything official, and, yeah, there's some names that are misspelled and stuff, so.
Anything to just correct it, and we'll give it to you.
Alright, so, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of December 10th with some minor corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstain. 600.
Who moved it, John, you, who moved it and who seconded it?
Kip moved it and Max seconded.
Kip.
I think we're caught up on the minutes then, too, because we did the others.
I think we still have two back in September, but I think other than that, we're...
We did the November, October ones. Review mail, anybody do that, or we can do that if they switch that to the end?
Yeah.
So, just quickly, what we want to do is take some, if there's someone from the public that wants to say something that's something that's not on the agenda tonight, but you have a quick question or a comment to the planning board, this would be the time to do it. We're here for everything on the agenda. I'd like to take a minute. So we've, I've been on the planning board for almost 12 years, and for many of those years, we've had assistance from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, and in particular from Pat Smith, and she's with us tonight, but this is her last meeting that she's gonna be with the Deerfield Planning Board as she is retiring. So, I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you very much, she's actually gonna help us with some of the issues tonight, so people who are here are lucky, because we might get things done well, and we are gonna sort things out and see what other kinds of assistance we might get from the council of governments going forward, but I just think, Pat, you've been great, you've been so dedicated, committed, you really get things to us when we need it, and help clarify things, so we greatly appreciate everything you've done for us, and would love to say thank you and goodbye, and hear something from you.
Thank you so much for that, John, I really appreciate that, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say goodbye to the board, it has been a pleasure to work with you guys. This is a very busy board, we have all learned so much over the course of all these years, and I have really enjoyed the opportunity to work with all of you, so thank you so much, I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you.
Suppose we should've got together and got flowers or something, but at least I think I'd rather applause than be there. And, it's good when someone leaves, someone else comes, so I think this is a good opportunity to just say hello and welcome to Connor, and do you want to just come up and say what's your new, your name and what your job is here with the town?
Yeah, sure. I am the very newly appointed Assistant Town Administrator here, as part of that, I'll be doing some projects with the Administrator's Office, but I think a large part of my job's also gonna be as the Planning Officer, so I'll be coordinating a lot of land use projects and dealing with this board, zoning board, probably ConCom as well, so hopefully I can fill Pat's shoes, if that's possible.
Sure, it's possible, we'll give it a shot.
Thanks.
What's your last name, Connor?
Robichaud, R-O-B-I-C-H-A-U-D.
Thanks, and later this week, actually, I'm gonna be meeting with Connor and Pat and some other people down at the Town Hall, just to kind of figure out how...
Passing the baton.
How it's gonna work with the planning board, so at the next meeting, I'll have an update on that, so.
Looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's open the public hearing. So I'd like to open, reopen, to continue the public hearing for a site plan review and special permit, application for a proposed cannabis cultivation facility. The plan, including renovation and conversion of an existing 2.6 acre greenhouse, construction of a new 33,000 square foot building for harvesting, drying, and shipping, was filed by Berkshire Design Group on behalf of Sun Mass, Inc. The location of the project is 198 Mill Village Road, Assessors Map 94, lots 4, 5, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, on property owned by Pioneer Gardens, Inc., Arjun Vrend and Carl and Sarah Davis in an area zone residential agricultural. Copies of the proposed project have been available at the Town Hall, any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at this time and place designated. So as I said, it's a continuation, but I feel the applicants or some of the representatives could come up and maybe just give an update of where we're at, and if we've learned anything since the last hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Richard Evans, representing Sun's Mass, Inc., and you know, Chris.
Chris Calasinski from Berkshire Design Group, civil engineer for the project.
And in addition to Yop and Arien, we have Blake Gilmore, who is, will be the Director of Security for the new facility. Chris, do you want to update the plans that have been submitted?
Sure, just to recap actions on our end since the last meeting, first, we have formally submitted the stormwater permit application, the design is not any different than what was submitted on the original plans, but that includes the stormwater application form as well as a complete stormwater report, which has also been provided to Conservation Commission separately. We have, as I think Dick is gonna talk about just a little bit, we did submit the project to our own sort of peer review from a legal perspective, to Attorney Doug Dubendorf, who's someone that I believe the town has worked with on a number of occasions in the past, to review some of the, some of the compliance with bylaws and, and any interpretations that there may be. I understand that Attorney Dubendorf's been in contact with the Building Commissioner to discuss some of his findings. Through that process, he did request from us a couple of pretty minor modifications to two of the plan sheets that we submitted, that made a couple of clarifications, those included quantifying and then printing on the lot plan, the existing percentage of impervious coverage on the property, which we now show, that being 16%, as opposed to the proposed condition where we'll have 19% coverage, which, actually, I should show that, that would be on this plan, which is in the submitted materials, so we made an edit here, again, hard to read on this screen, but does say 16%, and then we also added a couple of notes attempting to clarify exactly what is to be of the several lots that make up this project, and so just stating a little bit more clearly that the, actually, I have a better view of this. I think this will read a little better. Clarifying that, Lot 16, which has the existing greenhouse, Lot 13, which is Arien's property, lots 14, 15, and 17, those are separate tax lots, but all the same property, the Davis property.
And you just show us where the road is, the road is right in front of you?
Oh, and the road's running right along here.
Mill Village.
Yep. So those five lots would be combined through an A and R that we would submit, we would request that that be a, a condition of the planning board, if they want to impose that simply because the purchase and sale of the properties is contingent on approval of the project, and we can't combine the lots until Sun's Mass owns all of them, but that would be our intention, and that separately but owned, what's the phrase?
In common ownership.
Owned in common ownership, separate lots in common ownership for the agricultural fields 4, 5, and 9. And I guess there may be a little more detail from, from Dick on that, but then additionally, ooh, this is a different plan, let me flip back here, and just say that additionally on the site plan, Attorney Dubendorf just asked us to make a modification to how this plan is shown, to make sure that we're encompassing all of the boundary to the rear, including the setbacks, and also had us show the extent of the security fence and a 25-foot setback from there more clearly on the plan, so those were submitted, and then attached to that, for the planning board's record, we submitted the APR that is attached to those agricultural lots, that's also material that went to the attorney, so we wanted to make sure that you had a copy of that. And then outside of the planning board context, we did meet with Conservation Commission to open our hearing with them, we are still working through the issues of the previous potential wetland impacts, which are gonna require some coordination between us, Conservation Commission, and the State DEP, we're hopeful that we can resolve all of the previous issues and then move forward with our NOI application at the Conservation Commission meeting late in January. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Yes, we reached out to Attorney Dubendorf at Mr. Kalaszewski's suggestion, and retained him to perform an independent legal review of this application, and he did, and he came back with those few tweaks that Chris just mentioned, he also reviewed the APR, and it does not appear to be a problem, the APR is a pre-1994 APR that does not have a option to purchase at ag value with it, instead, it has a right of first refusal, and we can, we give, the way, the process works is we give notice to the Department of Ag and send them a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, they have 60 days in which to match the offer, but given the fact that that land's gonna remain in agriculture, we don't expect them to express any opposition whatsoever, so the APR does not appear to be an impediment to our going forward with this. I've got a few other things to say, go ahead, then.
Just, just quickly, of course, we'd wait for the official authorization or whatever from the state.
No, no, we just give notice to the department, and then if they want to object, they can, or if they don't, they, or they can sign a waiver, but they don't, they don't have to authorize anything, we just give them notice, and they can respond or not.
Alright. If they don't respond, how do you, I mean, if you don't get anything back, how would you know what their stance is?
Well, then you wait the 60 days, and you file an affidavit saying that we waited the 60 days, and they didn't respond, and you go forward.
So those two, those lots that are in APR are not gonna be combined with the other lots?
That's right.
They're just under common ownership, you're saying?
There'll be a common ownership, but they will not be combined, they will remain separate from the greenhouse and the two residential parcels.
And is it of your opinion, or yours and Mr. Dubendorf's, that as long as land is under common ownership, that you can, I'm gonna assume that Chris's coverage of 16% includes all the APR land?
Correct, yeah.
So if you don't count the APR, then it might exceed it, so in any case, you're saying that as long as land is in common ownership, regardless of the status, that you can claim that area as, you know, impervious surface?
It's, it's, for you, it's Mr. Dubendorf's, you too.
Correct, and we also discussed it with, with Dick Kalaszewski in the building office, and he was also of the opinion that, that the separate lots in common ownership was, was an acceptable way to calculate the coverage.
I, okay. The thing that I just would like us to think about, and we should get legal ownership, my friend.
Yes, correct.
If you have, I mean, there are places in town that we just went through where there's two or three acres of land, and, you know, the proposed construction would be like 40%, but if the same person owned all the fields next to it, they'd say, well, we can cover all, 100% this, because now we own, we have all, we own all this farmland next to it. I don't think that, I don't know, but...
This is unusual for us, because normally it is, we look at, the site is all right contiguous, so...
A contiguous site, and if I'm not mistaken, Richard Kalaszewski brought that up the last time, that it needs to be a contiguous site, it sounds like he may have changed his mind, so perhaps he would speak...
Well, the question is, can you call this, I mean, it's all connected, so, you know, what is that?
Common ownership.
So we're gonna get some other people's opinion on this, and we'll get back to you, so both on that and the APR thing, regardless of, you know, we're gonna wanna hear it from the state, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I think you wanted to hear it from Mr. Dubendorf, didn't you?
APR.
Have you, have you heard, have you heard from Mr. Kalaszewski?
I don't know if there was federal money in it.
No, no, and so that's, this is a public hearing, so we can do that tonight, maybe.
It's pre-1994.
So you've not, so you've not heard from Mr. Dick, his conversation with Mr. Dubendorf?
We haven't, and that's why we hold the public hearing, so we can hear from people's, what people are learning, we don't do that outside of the meetings normally.
Sure, sure, okay. Do you expect him to be here tonight?
I, I saw Dick here.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
I hope he's able to say something.
But, John, just to clarify, we are gonna seek legal counsel.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, and again, and this is nothing against or for you guys, but this is the first one, we told you this the last time, I'll go over it again, just for the public, is that this is the first marijuana business that's come before us, and it's a new thing, it's new for the state, it's new for the town, we want to do it efficiently, but we want to make sure we're listening, we're getting all the legal and, you know, whatever consultants we might need to bring into this, double checking.
So you want to get a second legal, independent legal opinion?
No, we want an independent, we want a town one.
We want ours.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
You hired the attorney you just mentioned.
We paid his bill, but he wasn't working for us, I mean, we retained him, but as an independent, to give the town an independent...
Yeah, no, nice guy, but we're gonna get our own town counsel to look at it, yeah, nothing against anybody. You would certainly understand that, being an attorney yourself.
Have attorneys ever disagreed at any point?
I thought, I thought that you wanted an independent legal review, we arranged for and paid for an independent.
Yeah, I'm not sure anybody, I'm not sure, I didn't ask for that, I don't know.
Yeah, no, we didn't ask for that.
We're gonna get a town counsel on this.
He said we wanted us.
Which, which, but it's great, you've done all the homework, so hopefully it'll be nice and simple.
Is there like a timeframe on this meeting, or is it just...
That's what we want, we need to do tonight, is really get a timeframe on this, because we don't want it to drag out, and I know we maybe already did, part of that was the holidays, and I apologize, because we don't think we gotta, we gotta figure out what specialists we need.
Yes, are you going to send out for a independent engineering review as well?
That would be a decision that would make tonight, yes.
We'd be grateful if you did, we are, we're really eager to look at the project forward, appreciate you.
Alright, so there's not many, there's not much difference from last?
No, I said, those, those minor edits to the plan are the only things that have changed since we were here last.
And I do have, so I have the, the special permit site plan, and the stormwater, you said was?
That's submitted recently, I thought I saw a few of you flipping through it.
I did see. Stormwater management plan.
Now, in your, your stormwater...
Yes.
Did you take into account, is this considered a new, new construction, as if it were, because it is a change of views?
Right, it's, under the stormwater standards, it would count as a mix of new development and redevelopment, because we are taking an area that has some impervious area in the existing case and then adding to it, so the, under stormwater standard number two to match the free and post runoff, we need to model the existing condition and determine the flow rate produced by the existing site, and then ensure that under the design standards, we have not exceeded it.
Because you're, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're taking what was a temporary structure, a greenhouse, and making it a permanent structure by putting a block wall in it versus, so now it's a permanent structure?
I mean, it's still a greenhouse, and I think it meets all the design standards of greenhouse, ultimately, we're taking a site that has, as I approach the site from an engineer perspective, whether it's a greenhouse or a building, it's still a roof that's, that's blocking all the rainfall on the earth, so when I approach the existing condition, the greenhouse isn't existing for these area, that is creating runoff, going into those systems primarily at first, and then running off the site.
Thanks, any comments from people in the public, comments, questions? I thought I saw Dick.
Yes, he's hiding back there, no, he's there.
Dick Kalaszewski, would you want to say a few words? Apparently you've had some discussions on this and would be happy to be updated, alright, I'll put the microphone, please.
Thank you.
Not just, not just for this room, but of course for our TV audience as well.
No, the only, the only thing I can add...
Dick is currently our, our building inspector?
Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just questioning, because I know you were trying not to be, but you are.
You are reluctant, thank you.
Okay.
No, they've been in several times to go over the new plans and the drawings, they've been in to see Priscilla for conservation, for a couple of issues there that are being worked out, they're being worked on right now with the Conservation Commission, which don't appear to be a big deal at this point, you can get more information if you want to talk to Priscilla tomorrow.
Well, just, so they got to, they gotta go through that NOI and...
Yeah, but what I, my information that I got as of a couple of days ago, was it didn't look like it, I talked to one of the people on the Conservation Commission, and he didn't think it appeared to be that much of an issue, okay? We've, so...
Do you know if they're gonna do, are they gonna bring in any engineer, because if we're gonna bring in a consulting engineer to look at our, if they needed someone, we might use the same person for the stormwater.
They were planning to coordinate with you to, yeah, to piggyback on that.
And anything about this impervious surface using land that's not right part of the main parcel?
Well, this gets a little complicated, okay, as you know, there's six lots, six, six parcels?
Oh, what?
Okay, there's, there's some laws that I can't quote the exact law number and stuff, they deal with that under merger, okay, as long as the parcels are all six parcels, do not have to be on the same deed, I've done the research on that, okay, they don't have to, they just have to be contiguous parcels under the same ownership or control, okay? The other part of that is that some of the land is in APR, it does not have to come out of APR, from my understanding, because it will be still used for APR, and can't be used for anything else, okay? So the only use of those structures, which, I'll help you out a little bit here, John, while they may be considered, they're not temporary structures, they're, they're not a plastic hoop building, okay?
Well, I just know that some, sometimes...
Well, I just know that some, sometimes greenhouses are considered-
You're right, because if you go back into the agricultural exemption a couple of years ago, as you're well aware of, you can put up a hoop structure building, plastic coated, with no building permits at all, with no permission from anybody, okay? You can do them all over the place. These are a little bit different, okay? They're just, these buildings are not that kind of a structure, okay? I'll just leave it at that. And they've been there for several years. I can't, do you check the age of those? Ninety-nine, maybe?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so they've been there for that. They're going to tear down a little bit of one structure and add back, and I, you've got the plans, so.
I guess the point I was just trying to make, that is if they were considered temporary structures, they no longer will be.
No, they're not, they were not considered temporary.
But if they never were, it's a non-issue.
They're not considered temporary structures. They're pretty much.
So what would be really helpful to us is the things you just said. If you can just have the backup documentation for that, about that contiguous thing, even if it's not in the same deed, and then the APR, and again, we're going to wait for some wording from the state.
I can get with him to give me the thing, and I can submit it to our town council.
Connor.
We got projects for you.
I will coordinate with Connor to have him take care of that stuff, since that's his new function, okay? And I will just help him as an advisor and get that all clarified, okay?
Whatever you have, you could get to him, so he could have, whether it be Lisa or Adam.
Adam Costa's the one who's going to handle that.
The reason I bring that up, what I think is so important, is that we all know that there's a lot of commercial property along Route Five. Behind Route, behind this commercial property is a lot of farmland. And given what we've learned tonight, any one of those lots could put up they could cover a hundred percent of it, as long as they happen to own the farmland behind it. And it would be very easy for them to go to the farmers and say, look, I'll give you twenty thousand dollars for ten acres, and you can keep farming it forever. It's your, you know, or-
Right, and now you're taking commercial property and using the agricultural property, but technically you're turning that agricultural property into commercial property.
Well, not really, because it's, but that's, what I'm saying is, what you're saying is that it's still being agricultural use.
Right.
And, but what I guess what I'm saying is, it's maybe a very smart legal way of circumventing our violations.
And one possibility, and I don't know your zoning map or code as well as you do, but in this case, the cannabis cultivation is an allowed use in the RA zone.
Right.
So if it were a commercial property with RA farmland behind it, then that wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily work, because it's not an allowed use on that backland.
Okay. I'm going to add to that.
But the thing is, the cannabis is not an agricultural use.
Correct, but it's an allowed-
It's an allowed use. It is an allowed use. It is, it is a law. Well, that's what I'm saying. Same thing on Route Four. My, my train of thought is that the commercial lots on Route Five could only be commercial. You couldn't stretch the commercial onto the RA land behind it. But we look at how much coverage you can use, and if you can only cover forty percent, and all of a sudden, now you've got this farmland that you're going to say, well, I own ten acres of farmland, so, you know.
And I, the lawyer could probably opine better than I can, but I would argue that the land you're counting, the use would have to be allowed on that land from a zoning perspective. From, it would have to be an allowed use in the RA zone to, to count that land.
Let me clarify a little bit.
Sure.
The cannabis portion growing in this is while it's deemed a non-agricultural product, that means, and please correct me, Mr. Evans, if I'm wrong, that means that you can't get the agricultural exemptions for that, okay?
That's right. That's right. A lot of people say growing marijuana isn't agriculture. I hear this all the time. That's flatly wrong. What the law says is that, that for purposes of the agricultural exemption, cannabis cultivation is not deemed agriculture. But certainly cannabis cultivation is a form of agriculture.
Now, I'm going to go answer another question, because it wasn't brought up yet. When they stop production of the cannabis at this site, it cannot go to commercial site for any other uses without coming back to the planning board. It doesn't gain a commercial exemption, period. It only maintains its residential agricultural status, so the change of use, you can't do it.
And they can't change owner without coming back as well.
That is correct. If they can't change the owners of the property, the contiguous property, they can't change anything. The only thing they can do is use the buildings for cultivation, okay? And they can use the rest of the land for agricultural purposes. But once they stop doing this, again, it reverts to square one. Now you can only do residential agriculture. They can't go in there and stop doing cannabis, or they can't go in there and start doing some kind of a manufacturing facility. That's-
That use is not allowed in the-
That use is not allowed, period. So, so if you have any concerns about reverting to commercial and wind up with a general store in the back.
You had to say-
It can't happen.
So I'm, Pat, maybe you can help me, or someone, what is the percentage of, the maximum percentage of impervious surface allowed?
The maximum allowed is thirty percent.
Okay, so that's why it's-
I've asked him to do calculations on that and submit them to you.
The, actually, the existing site, if we did not include those three agricultural lots, is above thirty percent today.
So that's, I was kind of getting at here, is that if that could work, why wouldn't you do that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
If you don't need to include this back.
No, no, it's above thirty percent. Above thirty percent.
The existing greenhouse site is at forty percent coverage right now, which violates the zoning.
It's forty percent now.
Now, correct.
With the plan.
Yep, yep.
All right. All right. All right, well, we'll get to the bottom of that, so. All right, so it looks, I think we should just clarify what it is we need here. And so the stormwater, let's, I'll, who wants to take this on, or maybe we have Connor, I guess, to take it on? To work with the Concom to get, to see what they need, and then together we could hire a, someone to do the stormwater sort of calculations for us and everything. Public meeting, Dick. Don't hold your hand over that.
I almost said something. I stopped myself. I'm, you're, you're going to work with Connor, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll just assist him in finding the documentation he needs.
Great.
Okay. That's what I was, I was kind of looking for.
All right. So that's, so one item is, one item is whatever engineering consultant peer review we need for the stormwater, and we'll work on it with the Concom on that.
I, would that be the same peer reviewer as, as a general engineering review, or are you talking about two separate?
Potentially two separate. So now the question is, what else do we, would we need as a, for an engineering peer review? And then we have sort of the administrative peer review, which is what we usually often use Pat Smith for, and whether she does it or Connor or whoever, we still do that. But most of the other technical issues here are going to be some building stuff, but it's not, I mean, is it, you know, how complicated is it? And do we need to have peer review engineer look at, like, traffic is something we often do. I don't think traffic's an issue.
I don't think that's an issue.
You know, noise, light, all those things. A lot of these things are done, are under the state kind of direction, right?
I would say that in addition to whatever reviews you request, the state is going to re-review all of it.
Yeah. So, you know, when we were going over this whole, our bylaws, we looked at a lot of that, and we know that they're covering a lot of it, so if it passes their muster, then we're, it fits us.
And we don't need to do anything with the building, really, because that falls under the building department.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a-
I've got one suggestion, that you have their security guy coordinate and give you a report from the police department on the security, because that covers the lighting and the fencing, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know John is absolutely on top of that, so.
And then, you know, so we will want to get comments from all of our town officials and departments, so DPW can say what they need to. You know, one, one thing that we don't often talk about it, but I think we should here, is we have an agricultural commission, committee? What do we call it in town?
There's an agricultural commission. I can't remember the last time that they met, though.
Okay, because this-
Are you on that?
You were, I thought you were our rep to it or something.
I was a alternate, but I don't think that's, that's met in several years.
Oh, because this would be a potentially thing that they could weigh in on.
About two years, John.
All right. I mean, this would be the kind of thing they could weigh in on, not, you know, just recommendations, or they should come to these meetings and be part of it, but.
Chris, did you address whatever concerns DEP had with the land behind the greenhouses?
What we, where that stands is, so just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
When we submit an NOI to the Conservation Commission, a copy goes to DEP, and Mark Stinson at DEP reviews it. He flagged, based on some old aerial photos, the possibility that a portion of the greenhouse, let's say, altered existing wetlands. And so now where we stand is that the wetland scientist we had do the delineation for the wetlands is going through all the historical records that they can find. They're supposed to report back to me tomorrow with where they think historically the wetland line was. We will submit that information to the state, as well as the Conservation Commission, and essentially get their concurrence, that that line is where the wetland was at one point. And what will likely end up is that, based on some recommendations from the state, the local Conservation Commission will issue an enforcement order requiring either Pioneer Gardens or Sun's Mass to replicate wetlands on a different portion of the site to make up for what was disturbed. And then, once that enforcement order is in place, they'll be able to consider the notice of intent.
All right. I just, I just wanted to bring it up, so it wasn't out there. Okay, thank you.
Were you talking about his?
No. Well, no, there was, there was something over here. They had some aerial photos, remember, we saw them last night? And only because we got a notice, I just wanted to make sure that they addressed it.
Yeah. If you look on the screen, this is where the limit of the wetland currently exists, just beyond the back of the greenhouse. And based on Mark Stinson's reading of the aerial photos, that wetland line may have been into the greenhouse in at least some small areas along the back. Again, I'm going to rely on the wetland scientist to tell me where, where we think that that line was, and I don't have those results yet.
And our St. Peer reviewer could review that as well?
Well, okay for the reference. While you're on this map, why don't you just go quickly over some of these things? You've got a fence, you've got Abervady, Abervady there, you've got
Sure.
Some things, just to kind of give us a walk around the site.
Sure. Yeah. To some extent, what we're doing is not terribly complicated, but it is somewhat significant, given the site. We are going to construct that thirty-three thousand square foot building for, the word to describe this is a little funny. I guess processing is, is a fair word, but for where the harvest comes in and is dried and packaged and that sort of thing, it is specifically not what qualifies as manufacturing, because that's not allowed in the RA zone. The product would be shipped somewhere else for, for manufacturing, baking brownies, that sort of thing. The existing greenhouse, the existing main greenhouse is this building right here, which is approximately two point six acres undercover. We will be taking approximately twenty feet of that building down along this edge of the site, and that is, in order to comply with zoning. In the RA zone, a building can be located ten feet from a side property line, but cannabis cultivation must be at least twenty-five feet. So while this greenhouse complies with zoning today, being approximately eleven feet from this property line, if we left it alone, it would no longer comply with zoning. So we talked about potentially chasing a variance, but it's a relatively small area that it, we felt the simpler and cleaner way to do it was, was to modify the edge of this. And it gives us a little better access on that side, too, anyway, so that's not a bad thing.
That, that extra twenty feet is on the, that end coming down? Is that, where is that extra twenty feet?
It's this area right here on this sort of extension of the greenhouse at the southeast edge of the site.
Right down there, bottom right-hand corner. Demolish twenty feet of existing greenhouse, it says over on the, on the right note. Does it?
I'm sorry. Okay, yep, I see it, yep.
And just, maybe we started the entrance there. So the road, the driveway is the same one? Same as existing?
We'll reconstruct it, but in exactly the same place.
Same place, all right. So that's important. So all this stuff is well off the road? It's behind the houses?
Yes. In fact, the entirety of this parking lot, while we're going to reconstruct it, the layout is identical to what's there now. The, there is, there are a few different site features on the north side of the greenhouse that will be removed. First, to note what's staying, there's that series of ten, something like nine thousand gallon cisterns that catch the roof water. Those are all remaining. We are still working on the design details. Our hope is to use that water for irrigation. There's very careful controls on water quality that are necessary, but it's, it's certainly a great source, and, and our intention is to use that as the first source of water on the site. There is, there are areas of concrete, as well as, as sort of bare and disturbed land on this edge of the site that will all be removed, and this will simply be seeded, revegetated. There is an existing tarp structure. This probably, there's a structure here that probably does qualify as temporary. It's really just a tent over some equipment, although I think there's concrete under it. This whole area was poured with concrete at one point in time. So that will all be removed. It actually encroaches over the property line. That'll be removed, and this will just be vegetated with grass within the fence. The fence line, as I mentioned last time I was here, the intention is to infill the rear wall of the greenhouse with concrete block. The purpose of that was that we had sort of a conflict between protecting the wetlands, providing security, and also respecting the zoning requirement that requires a twenty-five foot setback from fence. Twenty-five feet would have put us well into the wetland. So again, we, we considered running the fence immediately behind the greenhouse and seeking a variance for that. But the idea of just leaving this side of the building completely closed off to the resource area seemed, seemed worthwhile, and also, you know, uncertainties around chasing a variance led us to go ahead and choose the solid wall along the backside there. The secure-
So that'll be part of, the Concom's got to look at that, too, and as you're doing the building, erosion controls and everything?
Yes, absolutely. And there is an erosion control barrier that will run along the back of the building. Will leave enough space for construction access. There should be just barely enough room to get access back there and, and be able to build the silk fence outside of, of the wetlands. The security fence that I will trace runs here. Part of the reason that we added the, that we, that the, my client chose to purchase the Davis property is primarily site access. Currently, with where the existing fence line is, it gets very tight in here, and with the addition of the building, we're making the site pretty tight already. So in addition to giving us frontage, which was important for clarifying the zoning, this also opens things up a little bit, so that we can, we can get in and out of the site a little bit easier. But again, that fence line travels here, and then follows the property line on these edges. There is a main gate at the driveway right here, which has a small guard shack to allow controlled access in and out. But this will be the, the main entry to the site. In terms of signage, the intention is to keep this at a very low profile. There will be one sign, not much different than what's out there today, announcing the address. There will not be any company name, any indication of what goes on inside of this facility. There will be an address and a phone number for the office, and then there will be a sign on the gate that says authorized personnel only. As I mentioned, this is not a public facility. There are no tours. There is nobody within this site, except the people who are supposed to be there to be working.
But we do often, want some kind of contact information.
Yes, so on the fence, there will be an office phone number, and then additionally, anytime the facility is open, there will be a guard on duty to control access in and out of the site. Access control is actually a- Access control is actually a very important part of the security plan, which I can give a... Blake or I can give a little detail on that if there's interest. We also will have a gate on this side, just so that we can access the land that will be owned in common. The intention is for that gate to be rarely used and locked. There will be... in terms of the questions around security and lighting, there will be some lighting. There are some fixtures shown on the plan, typical for the parking lot, which is primarily just for safety of employees coming in and out during those times of the year when shifts are beginning or ending in the dark. This is not a 24-hour facility. It will be, you know, a typical 7 to 6. I don't know exactly what the hours are, but this will only be lighted sort of during those marginal hours, particularly in the winter, for safety. And the reason for that is that there will be security cameras all over the exterior of this building, but they are all low-light infrared, sort of the latest technology, so we don't need to light the site up like an airport to keep it safe in the overnight hours.
How do you provide access for emergency vehicles around 2/3 of the building?
Really, the only place that wouldn't be accessible is that rear of the building. This distance here is... oh, I'm going to estimate 60 or 70 feet on this side, and there is a paved strip that goes between these buildings in the existing condition to get back there. And here, we've gone through some iterations to make sure that we've got, again, I think it's about a 30-foot wide path, and then some space for turnaround on this side.
Over here, there's nothing. So that... we just need the fire department to sign off on that or whatever?
I was going to say, it's a plastic hoop. There's not much that can burn, except for the comments.
Yeah. I've talked to the fire chief, although not recently, about the plan to just review some of the details. Actually, those cisterns were one of the things that he highlighted. He wanted to make sure they were not going away, because those are sort of a backup water supply. On that note, this building, the existing building would remain qualified as a greenhouse and would not require fire protection under the building code. The new building absolutely will require fire protection, and so we will be bringing a new 6-inch line in from the street. We've already done the fire flow test, and the fire protection engineer has those results. And we've coordinated with the water district, sorry, the fire district on those questions. And now I've gone back and forth, and I've forgotten if there's anything else I wanted to highlight.
Yeah, that's good. All right. So I guess that comes back to a question, is do we need any kind of peer review engineer?
I don't see...
I don't see that we do.
No, I would just think stormwater.
Yeah. I feel like we understand all this. Max, you understand all this construction part of it?
He just chose to... I mean, don't we have in our bylaw that you could have the fence around the whole thing?
That's what this is all about, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, they don't.
I don't think they require the fence, per se. If I'm wrong, please correct me on that. It does have an offset from the fence if one is required under the CCC regulations.
It doesn't over here. There's no fence.
I think you need to go back to the security.
Stops here, stops there.
I think you need to go back to the security section, because of all the meetings I've been to, all that fencing has been addressed and has to be approved by the police department.
Right. And we have met with the police department to...
I'll probably answer some of that.
We made sure to meet with the police chief specifically around the question of a wall versus a fence in the back, and he was comfortable with the wall.
Saying there's a wall there.
A cement wall.
The backside of the greenhouse currently is just plastic sheeting, and that would be replaced with concrete block.
Let me just make one last statement, and then I'll get up and let Blake sit down. They've hired Don Dubendorf, who's been before the board before for some zoning stuff, to go through all this zoning. And it's very simple to take Don's report that he's done for the zoning and submit it to Adam Costa.
Yeah.
I'll get with Connor. We'll do that, and that should simplify the whole thing, because, I mean, he's the...
But I want the board to have the benefit of Mr. Dubendorf's analysis and his review.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if you're giving a copy to Connor as the equivalent of submitting it to the board.
Well, what we're going to do is, we're going to coordinate that together, and Connor will absolutely submit it to the board and give it to them.
You mean outside of the meeting?
Yeah.
We want our town council.
Well, we want to get the copy to them, so they have it in their hand.
We're happy to review it, but we're just as happy to have our town council review.
Yeah.
Well, I just want you to have the benefit of it. I'm fearful if we...
Don't get them missed anything.
John, could we request that we're kind of involved with the conversations between, you know, our Connor and just kind of be included in the emails, so we know what's going on?
Yeah. I think what we can do is take the report, get Adam's comments, and give both the exact shots.
Exactly.
Well, even what I like and what I usually get is I'm copied on it. At least normally how we do it here is the chair, clerk, and vice chair get copied on the email. So we'd get copied on the email going to the attorney, so we know what you're asking in case there's a question that we see is missing, and then on the report back.
We can get that done in a few days.
Yeah.
That's not going to take very long at all to get that done. Connor's been doing a great job on all this stuff, and he'll follow up on that, I'm absolutely sure. And we'll get it to the board, and it'll be a done deal.
And then, so the other thing, Connor, is to get, and Dick can help you with this, is make sure all the department heads and other town officials all give comment on this. Now that we have a... and we'll use the latest to the... this is January... dated January 3rd is the latest plan.
Yes, correct. And I gave it to Connor, so I think he has that also.
And it sounds like the police chief is already up on it. And the fire department, have you had contact with them?
I spoke with him earlier, although...
Is this going to be Darren Melick?
This is Darren, yes. Yeah, I spoke with him, but I haven't received any comments directly from him. So you folks should certainly receive comments from him, but I'm going to follow up myself to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
All right. So those are what I... So we're saying no other independent engineering review. We're good with the Berkshire Design Group, with the explanations, with the calculations. So it's the stormwater that's going to be important to us then. And then again, we... what is... I forget the procedure, sort of with the state and with the town. They want to see what we do, or we want to see what they do?
When you say the state, do you mean the CCC?
CCC, yeah. Sorry.
They just want to hear that the citing this operation is okay with the town.
All right. But then we're going to sort of rely on them, is about the fencing and those security, all that stuff. They're more into that than we are.
They do all the heavy lifting, and they enforce it as well.
With the security plan, it basically has to follow the guidelines that the state has set up.
Yeah.
So, and that includes background checks as well as the monitoring, which, again, the company is very stringent as far as the video surveillance, that everything has been ... can be seen on video.
So let me ask you that, because that's a... how far out do these videos reach? Someone driving along Mill Village, is that they on video?
That's not the object of what's being done.
I'm asking, what is it? What does it?
It won't... it will cover the facility inside the fence line itself and anything that might be coming over the fence itself, but it will not be extended out beyond where that fence line is.
All right. So neighbors don't have to worry about it spying on them.
Exactly. That's exactly the... exactly.
And actually, one thing that I did not highlight, but currently, there's quite a bit of hedge out there, large Abervady primarily. We're planning to infill any of those places where there are gaps with evergreen shrubs on any property line that abuts land that we don't own.
Where are you going to buy the shrubs from? I hope it's a local one.
As local as we can find it, yeah.
Does Pioneer Gardens do that, or different types?
I don't know if what they have is big enough for us just yet, but...
Keep the money local. All right. So I see a lot of this can be happening over the next couple of weeks. Anybody else have comments or questions out there? All right. Comments, questions here? Should we set a new... and on the date then, and expect to get all this information so that we can be close to a decision, if not have a decision? When's the ConCom meeting, you said?
Good question. Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, January 24.
But that's to determine what they need to do, sort of, I guess.
Their... the intention that they gave was to clarify all the historic work, issue an enforcement order if that's what needs to happen, and then proceed with the NOI as they would with any other project.
And they're working with Mark Stinson at DEP, so hopefully that can go at the same speed.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully, Mark Stinson's piece will be pretty well wrapped up this week.
All right. And then what about administrative kinds of issues? Pat, did you say you do want to follow through on this in the next couple of weeks? No? Okay.
No, and in fact, I believe that before the holidays, I drafted an RFQ for this, so we'll look at that when you guys come up with a quarter. I will look at that.
Yeah. And see if it's... we can do it internally, or we get some...
Because I have one, another, two, seven days.
Okay.
Seven days. Not that I can't.
Not that you can't. All right.
Mr. Chairman, could I say one more thing? Thank you. I've put some thing... a package of papers for you together tonight, and I'd like to leave it with you. One of them, the top document on the stack, is a checklist, more or less. I went through the Deerfield zoning for adult marijuana, as well as all the special permit general requirements, as well as the site plan review general requirements. And I actually cut and pasted the entire text of those three sections from Deerfield zoning on this page. And then opposite each section, I addressed how we address each requirement and how we deal with it. And so the purpose of this is just to provide you with our working checklist, and I hope it might be helpful to you, how we address every single requirement of the zoning. I think we've crossed every T and dotted every I in the zoning bylaws.
Thanks.
Another thing that I'm going to give you is it's called a criteria for determination. As you know, the decision you will be making when we're done here, hopefully at our next meeting, is to determine that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood. That's really what it comes down to. And so I've...
That's for the special permit, I believe.
That's right.
Yeah.
And so I've listed... the bylaws list five or six mandatory considerations for that determination, but it's certainly not exclusive to those things. And so on this page, I've listed those mandatory considerations, as well as a number of additional considerations that you may want to take into account. And I've listed on one half of this column, the benefits of the proposed use. And I've left a column here for the... to list the detrimental impacts on the town. As you can see, it's blank. The only...
It's amazing.
The only detrimental impact that I can...
I'm so surprised.
I knew you wouldn't be. That's why I left it blank, so you could fill it in. But...
That comes from the lawyer, not the engineer.
I must hesitate, so I think there may be one... I'm fearful that perhaps the tax collector might have to put on additional staff to handle the new revenue.
Oh, the money coming into town, okay.
Okay. I also did some research on the impact of marijuana legalization on land use and on zoning issues generally. This is all about the use of land. There's not a whole lot, but I did find a couple of articles that I put in the package here that I think you'll find of interest. And one of them's a scholarly thing from urban geography about whether marijuana operations bring problems to a neighborhood. And this was a study that was based in Colorado, as well as the first one, and obviously finds the negative. This is a collection of documents relating to the same land, mostly on land use and marijuana legalization, but also the other... it touches on some of the other benefits of legalization on a community that don't directly relate to land use. And finally, an article from the Reason Foundation about whether legalization, what impact it has on crime. And I'll let you explore those, and I think you'll find them interesting, and I hope you'll ask me some questions next time, if you have any. But I think you'll find...
Appreciate. Appreciate that. You're doing work for the next applicant as well, I think.
Yes, yes.
He's not here, so I'll get...
If you have an extra copy, I'll...
This has been cited by a lot of...
Thank you.
Certainly. No. So do we have a date?
So I should have also said that, you know, this is a public hearing. It was posted. Things were sent out to the butters. I think all that's right, but these are all the things that we'll go through as we check off all the administrative things we're taking care of, but I think that has been taken care of. So I would like to... I think we're probably going to make a proposal to continue this hearing and then have a... ask you to sign a hearing continuation request that we all agree to.
I'll give it back this time.
And when do you think that'll be, John? The next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the 4th of February, I think.
Does that work for you folks?
We'll make it.
That's the first Monday.
That's the first Monday, and that's good. Then the ConCom will have met, so hopefully we'll have addressed a lot of those issues in between then. If there's no new information, we can put it off a little bit further, but hopefully we'll have a lot of new, you know, good information by then, and we can make... either make a decision or have some real specific things that we're waiting for. We don't like to make... just so you know, we don't like to vote and put lots of conditions on things that we're waiting for things. So the more we can have the day we make the decision, the better.
And maybe the A and R.
The APR.
A and R.
A and R. Oh, so what about the A and R?
Well, we can draw it up, but we... Sun's Mass would not own all the land at that point. The land actually would not be owned by the same entity.
Yeah, we're going to need that to be a condition.
Yeah, I don't see...
So that's another question, Connor, for town council.
Well...
Just, you know, when we put a time limit on it, we'd have to look into what the best procedure is to... we understand your situation.
Yeah. You understand the situation with the Davises.
Yeah.
We have underpurchased and sale contracted. If we put all the land together now, and then something happens with the deal...
Yeah.
Then they've lost their...
Yeah.
So we would ask you to make a condition of the permit that... I'm sorry?
Cost of doing business.
We try to avoid. We try to avoid...
No, we can see why you need to do...
I should hope that you'd help us.
Well, we can see why you need to do it. We want to do what's...
Sure.
The best interest of the town, that's all.
Yeah.
So that's... we like to check with our attorney.
But doing it as a condition would protect the town's interests.
If it does this. All right. So I got to find another continuation sheet.
So we are not seeking administrative support on this?
Yes, we are, seeking administrative. We're going to determine whether it's something we can do in-house.
I got you.
And I want to meet with Pat and Connor on Wednesday about that.
So we want to let the...
So if there is... if we do need to hire some administrative support, then we'll send you a estimate on that, and if it's okay with you, then you pay the bill. And then the one for the stormwater engineer will get an estimate from someone and have you put that up front.
You can do that between now and next meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
Yeah, I think on Wednesday we'll probably decide that.
John, I have a question. Whether it's in-house or out-of-house, the cost still should be covered by the applicant.
Yes, the same with Adam Costa.
Yeah, attorney's bills, those kind of things. I mean, we... I don't know exactly how it works, but I mean, we can ask a quick question to our attorney without... that's kind of on our bill, but if it gets... they have to review a lot of materials, then they give us a bill and we'll forward it to you, or we try to get an estimate, is what we try to do. Is that right?
Correct. Pass me that, I...
Yeah. So does someone make a motion that we continue the...
So let me just get something clear, then. When would we... and how would we approve of the peer review?
Oh, so... Oh, so...
In other words, do we say, okay, John, you're in charge of it, do it?
I think if you could make that as part of the motion of the continuing the hearing, and then town staff and me, or a couple of us could make that decision.
Well, aren't you going to do it with the Conservation Commission as well?
Well, that's the stormwater engineer, but I'm saying what Pat often does for us, that whole thing, along with the decision and all that stuff.
Any of the stuff that needs to be done before our next meeting that we need to approve, that's what I'm wondering about.
Well, we need to reach out to the Conservation and figure out what they're doing with stormwater, because it's under their jurisdiction, because there is wetlands.
So I would say that we will absolutely want to hire a stormwater, a engineer that can help us with the stormwater.
Well, would we do that, or would the Concom do it, and we would say, okay?
Yeah.
So it's really going to be Concom?
Right.
Or... Forget how we've done it in the past when we get a bill for $3,000, there's a Concom and the planning board split it, it doesn't really matter, the applicant pays, so...
The applicant pays the town, and either way.
Yeah.
And in some cases, Concom had already procured some of the services from the engineer, so you can just jump on the bandwagon with them. In other cases, you're going first. I think in this case, you may be going first, so we can...
Well, I think the NOI is in progress already, right? You're, the starting of it's...
It has, I may have led the Conservation Commission to believe that you were already pursuing the peer review engineer, so they may be hoping to jump on your bandwagon.
So let's make that, let's do that.
So how do we want to do that?
Let's make a motion, I move that we hire a peer review consultant for the stormwater application.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. And we'll do that the same way we have in the past, Connor will help us, we've got a list of different consultants, we'll send them...
One quick question on that now.
RFP out to them.
What if there was any little ancillary things that were outside of stormwater? You know, could this person be capable of handling any kind of peer review that might pop up? No? Okay. So it's just the stormwater?
Well, storm, everything that goes into our stormwater application.
Okay.
But not traffic and things, you know. And then we decided that we're not going to hire a technical review person for the other engineering, but that we likely will hire an administrative peer reviewer. And again, this is, we do this on many big projects, and in particular, this one, since it's the first one, as I've said.
So administrative peer review is what you're saying, right?
Yeah. So part of that discussion on Wednesday is with other people at the FERC, to see if other people at the FERC can do it, and in this case, they might, because they are, you have several people there who are up on the marijuana laws.
Is there any one other person who's working on it extensively, so pull up on the front?
Okay. But if you can, if we agree to do that, then if I can do that in between the meetings, that'd be great.
They would have to, excuse me, they would have to get all the information to the peer reviewer prior to our next meeting as well, because it's been my experience that if they only get a few days, even a week, they come here and they go, well, we have had...
I can assure you, we'll go out the same day we find out who the peer reviewer is.
So hopefully you'll get that on this Thursday, and we'll make a decision.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, so, just clarifying, then, John, you'll take charge of the, of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
With Connor's help. Make sure we get his name in all this.
Does the administrative review, is that to determine compliance with local law?
Yes.
Okay, well, okay, as someone said about the marijuana laws, you really saw the bylaws, you don't have any marijuana laws, besides the zoning bylaws, right?
That's what I'm saying.
You just talked about the local bylaws, okay.
So it's actually a lot of what you've done the whole month course.
And then a question for me, because different towns approach the peer review process differently, I understand, so is it anticipated that, to the extent the peer review engineer has questions between now and the next meeting, that we would be interacting, or not?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And likewise, if the Town Council has any questions, please ask him to contact me, not wait for the next meeting.
Excellent. Good. All right, here is a continuation sheet. Great, so we did that vote already, right?
Yes.
We get a vote to what?
To continue the hearing until February 4th.
Okay, I didn't hear that one.
I don't believe we have voted on that.
So John, John Baronis moved it?
No.
John Wade?
John Wade did, and I seconded it.
And Kip seconded it.
I thought that was the vote to...
That's what I thought.
I thought we did one vote, and that was...
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Was that, did you have that somehow figured out to be one vote for the...
No, it was a separate vote.
We got a vote...
Okay, all right, so I've got, I've got John W. and Kip to hire a peer review for, for stormwater and administrative peer review. And John and you, John Wade and Connor will put the RFQ out ASAP. Now we've got a second motion here.
So I've moved that we...
Now who moves it?
I will move that we continue this hearing.
Rachel, okay.
Until...
And who seconded it?
February 4th.
We'll second it.
Kip seconded it, okay.
The 7th.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
So that's to February the 4th at 7 o'clock.
Excellent. All right, so I'm going to write up this...
And that was 6-0-0, is that right?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yep.
So this is the 7th today, and 4th is the hearing for peer review.
And has this been to the select board already?
We're going to meet...
We're going to meet on Wednesday.
All right, so that might be part of it, too. We'll get a report back on that. Oh, 24, I got to write 19, 18, sorry. 7 o'clock.
Can't backdate it.
Big notice here.
In this packet, I saw something about the odor control mechanism.
Yes.
Who do I deal, you or...
Do you have a specific question, or just like to learn a little?
I'd just like a little more information, because I know in previous meetings, Dick has told us to, it is quite...
It's a very important consideration, especially in the cultivation setting. And so there are a few different methods that have been used with varying degrees of success to control the odor. Activated carbon is great, but you've got to change the filters constantly, or they stop working. There are other filtration methods that have varying degrees of efficiency. What we're proposing on this facility is actually been developed specifically for cannabis cultivation. It uses an odor neutralization that actually oxidizes the molecules that we smell to change them, so that our nose nerves can't interact with them anymore. So it literally destroys the odor. And the way it does that is, there's a company called FogCo, which started off as just creating sort of misting equipment, that creates a superfine droplets of water, and then that was combined with this odor neutralizer that's actually made from essential oils.
Febreeze.
What's that? Actually, it is, it's essentially Febreeze, but with, you know, the chemical engineers went to work to try to find compounds that would specifically target the odor molecules that are associated with cannabis. And so on every one of the exhaust vents on the greenhouse, and I actually, I think I included photos of it, there's a ring that is one of these misting devices, and as the water is injected, as the water is released, it's injected with the odor neutralizer to create a mist that then gloms on to all of those odor molecules and changes their structure so that we can't smell them, and in some cases, actually causes it to drop out of the air. And ultimately, the standard is that there shall be no detectable odor at the property line. That's my understanding, I'm not an expert on the CCC regulations, but that's...
That's what we want to be.
As far as we're concerned, a successful system means you should not detect odor outside of the building, and during the commissioning process of the building, that's going to be the standard to which the equipment is tested.
So thank you, if you could sign this continuation, then we'll see you on February 4th, but we'll have some interaction between then, I'm sure. So for the applicant, if you could, the applicant's name up here, and then sign the date down.
John, do you have the mail while we're, while we're gone between, and Rachel maybe can...
And then we'll take up the 100 railroad yard project. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I think we missed the mail last week, last month, I think.
Yeah, I think it was a long time ago.
So we'd like to do a, we received an application for a site plan review for the installation and operation of a ground-mounted photovoltaic facility on 20 acres of land at 100 Railroad Yard Road, and we've been here before, but I think we have a revision, and we want to make a plan now to move forward.
We knew we'd see you guys again.
100 Railroad Yard, is that your packet?
Yeah.
So how did you get involved with this now?
I know.
Oh, did everybody get, is that your packet there?
Good to see you again.
This here, it looks like everybody got a whole packet.
Yeah, we got Connor checked us out.
John, you see anything on 100 Railroad Yard?
I mean, this is what I have here, I don't think it's anything...
In the...
No. Do we have anything?
100?
No, I do not have...
It was a whole box for 100 Railroad Yard.
Can I just get your names again, I bet your cards, I'm sure.
That's Kyle, are you kidding?
Kyle Purdy, yeah. Kyle Purdy.
Do we need additional forms?
We don't need additional forms.
John Drobinski.
We need original forms.
Last name again?
Drobinski.
Drobinski, right.
So be careful, don't get them mixed up. So this is all...
Tom Reedy.
Tom Reedy, okay. I think I talked to you.
And John in that folder?
No, it wasn't you, no.
Probably was Matt.
Oh, here, you take the...
Who's next?
Matt Norrie.
Matt, and your last name again?
Matt, Norrie, N-O-E-H-R-E.
N-O-E-H-R-E.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
No, it's Sun's Mass.
Yeah, wasn't there something in the packet here? Sun's Mass.
You did send your correspondence.
No, I thought there was...
That's what you just gave.
I'm going to look at the... I'm paying attention. Nice.
So he's getting, Dick, can you grab the box out of the office there?
I got a key.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't go anywhere.
I know, it's your office, I hope you have a key.
Yeah, all the doors open.
They trust you with the key, okay.
Interesting.
...long years. Town, what do we see, is we doing here? This is just nothing that needs saving.
We speak for the trees.
All right, this is wonderful. Thanks. Keep an eye on the Clemson game, I have something to say. Clemson just scored one, their first touchdown.
Oh.
And the Celtics are up by like 50.
Clemson is ahead?
Clemson's ahead. Clemson scored the first touchdown, it's 7-0 in the first quarter. So we have an application, site plan review application from...
Oh, yeah. So we think it's the best.
Nicola Cornetta? Mass RE 12. And it's for a proposed, Mass RE 12 Deerfield Solar Project will be constructed immediately adjacent to the existing Deerfield Railroad. The proposed project will involve the installation and operation of ground-mounted photovoltaic solar panels that will generate approximately 2.5 megawatts of direct current DC electricity. The proposed project will be built upon 20 acres of land at the Deerfield, at 100 Railroad Yard, Railroad Yard Road. So we have a, so as, since it's more than 10 acres, it's considered a very large, extremely large, extra-large solar project.
Largissimo.
And that is in our bylaws with certain, certain standards and everything. And it looks like this was, so this application now is submitted on December 24th, 2018. I think it's similar to one we've talked about before, but it's a fresh, fresh application. And I don't have the officially stamped one, was that in the box, John, maybe, that just came out? Can you see the one there? Did you get all, and see if there's something that we should all be looking at?
Seems to be the entire project.
So it has, but it has a lot of the old stuff, too?
Yeah.
But there should be copies of the modified...
Can you, can you find me this, the application?
Yeah, if there's one, I'd like it, the application.
Well, that's your job.
All right, while we're going through the paperwork, if you could give us a quick update, introduce yourselves, give us a quick update of maybe where we've been, but then where we are, and where we need to go, is the most important thing.
Sure. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Mass RE 12 Solar. Looking, so to put a finer point on kind of everything, maybe before we delve into too much of the detail of trying to set another hearing, there's nothing different in this application than was in front of you previously. It's the same size, it's the same land, everything is the same. What we did was, we actually filed, let's call it a placeholder application, the day before Christmas, to try to get in front of you to talk about the previous application, if it makes sense. So you're probably wondering why the team is here, to talk about maybe setting another date. And the real reason is, because when we were in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals on December 20th, we received the variances, the use variance and the dimensional variances that we had requested. It is an extra-large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility, excuse me, not because of the 10 acres. So it's a 20-acre site, the panels only take up six acres, we don't cross that 10-acre threshold, but as a result of the direct current, we have 2.5 megawatts, that exceeds the 2-megawatt threshold here in town. So we did, in fact, receive that use variance, and then we also received dimensional variances for the setbacks from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But to put all the cards on the table, we've asked the utility company for a couple of extensions already, for a very significant payment, $120,000 payment, which is non-refundable, and is only going to go to them if we know, in fact, the project is going to happen. That payment occurs January 22nd. And so frankly, the issue is that if this is, taking it as a new application, and I'll put my little asterisk here, because I'd like to talk about the previous application, and how potentially we could use that to say, that November 15th vote of 3-1-1 was, in fact, the approval. We haven't seen the December 10th minutes, it was, the December 10th meeting was passed the 60-day period, especially as extended and agreed to. But what would happen is, if you took this in, looked to notice it, you're not going to have it, you're not going to be able to do it in two weeks for the 21st, because we're not going to be able to notice it 14 days prior to that hearing. So we're talking about being back before you after that payment is going to be due, and there's just uncertainty associated with it, naturally. So I guess the ask is... So, I guess the ask is either at this meeting, ratify that vote of the, of November 15th where it was 3-1-1 to recommend it to the zoning board of appeals. Or do nothing, don't accept this application and just rely on the November 15th meeting as that approval, which has been, I guess, galvanized by the zoning board of appeals use variances granted. And then the next thing we do is, I, I know that at the end of the month, Matt is, he's already submitted the, the payment to the taxes agreement to the assessors and he's going to be talking with them about that agreement and also about the decommissioning shorty with the select board. So, it, it doesn't put you in the best position. I think there is a path forward and we really are asking because we're in this pinch with that significant payment due, especially when we look back at the tapes and hear and see what we heard and saw. So, we're happy to talk about the project, talk about the variants, talk about the procedures of it, but I just kind of wanted to put all of that on the table as maybe complicated as I made it.
I just.
You went back to the ZBA?
Yes.
December 20th, yes.
Your name is, your name is.
Yes.
So, something changed between?
Nothing changed. The only thing, we gave them a full presentation.
Yeah, if I, if I can, just to, just to talk on that, on that meeting, if you don't mind.
That's where the confusion was.
And the other thing, excuse me, the other thing that changed, the abutter showed up and had a petition to the ZBA to support the project.
That's.
So, just to, just to talk on that ZBA meeting, if you don't mind, just real, just give you the quick synopsis. It was probably about hour and a half to two hours. We went through, we were very thorough after all the comments from November 15th. We wanted to make sure we were clear, just very transparent amongst everything. Gave, the presentation itself was about 45 minutes that we delivered on a PowerPoint. And then there was public comment as well, discussion with ZBA. The project was, it was, we did get the variance on three conditions. One was that we provide a decommission bond letter and the pilot agreement with the approval of the select board. So, just to comment on that, pilot was filed last week and it is appearing in front of the board of assessors tomorrow night. And then the, if, we'll have some back and forth, and then it's, we are scheduled for the January 23rd to appear in front of the select board. So, we are going to be placed on the agenda then, depending on the meeting tomorrow night. The one, the second condition was that it would, the project would have to have 75-foot front setbacks and 25-foot side and rear. We were asking for 50-foot previously. So, with the ZBA back and forth and with input from everyone, we settled on a 75-foot front and setback. The third condition was that the project would be limited to 1.98 megawatts AC, 2.5 DC. So, these were, those were the three conditions that were granted.
Okay, so you got it under two, two, two megawatts?
Yes.
That's.
That's a change.
You weren't willing to do that at the first meeting.
Well, it was, we were at, we were at one point.
You withdrew your application.
We, we were at 1.98 megawatts AC before. The bylaw only stipulates two megawatts, not AC.
Right, we figured that out last meeting, that they don't stipulate AC or DC, so a savvy.
So, so that's, so that's where, so we, so we did, and like I said, it was a long meeting, but like I said, our understanding was that November 15th is that, like I said, I know the, the planning board to take a vote, 3-1-1, and that it was approved contingent on the ZBA passing that. No, and then at the November 15th meeting, ZBA wasn't in favor of the project. We withdrew the application and then we resubmitted. I know, I think it was November 30th, I think, I believe we sent you a, a letter kind of saying, hey, we've reapplied with the ZBA and look forward to just continuing the discussion in January, at the January planning board meeting because we couldn't get on the planning board agenda for December because of the ZBA and whatnot. So, that's what we're trying to figure out is kind of where the, what kind of happened in between then. We weren't at the December meeting. We don't know what happened there, but we thought that everything is plus approved, continued on the ZBA.
I thought, what is your understanding, Rachel? You shared that meeting.
Yes, I did.
I thought we approved it.
November 15th, and we didn't approve. What we did was we, we recommended.
We recommended it.
We recommended that the ZBA make.
Except, right, it wasn't unanimous. We just, we're making a recommendation. We weren't voting.
Someone refresh my memory. Was the peer review done on the stormwater for that? Was?
We, right, and we, we actually, month earlier, it's called the ComCom, we'll use the same.
And just. They, we received our order of conditions from the ComCom back in, I believe, November.
Nathan, whatever his name is.
Yes, Nate Russell from GZ. That's correct.
So, what are you looking for from us?
I guess ratification of that November 15th vote. I guess in the alternative, the, the issue becomes, the way your bylaw reads, it's, you have 60 days for action from the submission or from your receipt of the submission. And so, it was submitted August 23rd, but I know that there was an agreement to continue it, I think, to November 8th and then to November 15th. And ultimately, ultimately, we're looking for site plan approval. If we can get it this evening, that would be fantastic without having to go through a rehearing, a renotice and kicking it over to what it sounds like the beginning of February because of the time crunch with that significant payment. And the alternative is that 60-day window had expired and I, we just don't want to go down like a constructive approval route.
Can, John, we actually voted to reject this plan.
I know.
So, we do have to.
At the December meeting, because of that 60-day constructive thing, we said, we need to make a decision and we said, we do not approve the plan. And it was our, it was my understanding at the time that you were coming back with a new plan.
Yes.
And I was like, oh, great, let's just get that one out of the way and then we'll do the new plan and we'll make the new plan go quickly. Because at that point, we learned that you, things were going better, the neighbors, everything is, is fine. So, we actually did vote. I.
Yes, I remember that.
So, then we need to approve the new plan.
So.
Would it be?
And going back to that November 15th vote, it was to, to recommend approval of the project. It says right here.
Okay.
To recommend approval of the project to the.
ZBA.
To the ZBA. It was not approved, the site plan review.
No.
It was never about that. So, then it was kind of in limbo, so instead of having.
Hanging out there.
Hanging out there, we said, let's, let's, let's just stop that and start over again.
And we couldn't vote for it because you didn't have the variance.
Right. So, I mean, that would be the better way. Now, you got this complication of, you know, you've got to put some money out and you don't know that it's been approved, so I, I.
Now, let me just, let me just get this straight, John. In other words, the only reason we rejected it was for the fact that the zoning board had turned down their variance?
No, because the zoning board hadn't turned down the variance. We, we weren't sure, I think, about.
No, but when we rejected theirs, we had, they had already turned it down.
Yeah, they had.
And that was the, that was the basis on which we.
Well, then there was no way because of proving, because, right, because you couldn't approve it because it's not allowed in that zone.
So, the answer to what I said was yes?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So, so we have not, they're not asking us to do anything different than we were prepared to do.
Right.
Before.
Do we have to have a public hearing though?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the law.
Yeah, we could schedule a quick one, but it has to be two weeks.
It has to be noticed.
It has to be legal notice.
Yeah, the legal days and stuff, 14 days.
Well, from where I sit here, I think the same people will be at the public hearing that are here tonight. And.
No, just drag them out one more time.
I don't want to tell you what you, to do, but I would feel pretty confident that things would be in your favor.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, just going back over the records, the, the only issue was really, a lot of it came down to the sound because you're cutting down trees and so that's been kind of resolved.
Oh, that was resolved. Everything was resolved except for our zone.
All, all the issues were resolved with the abutters. I, I think the issue, when we just go the way back clock, the, the ZBA didn't want to make a decision unless you guys made a decision. You folks didn't want to make a decision unless the ZBA made a decision.
We couldn't make it.
We couldn't, yeah.
So, well, you, you could. You have, you have the ability under the bylaw to do that. But, you know, we understand what we got. So, the 15th was hopefully to work things out. You know, the planning board was very generous in saying, you know, we want to either approve it or send it to the ZBA. Thank you for that, and you did, and the ZBA made their decision. But after the ZBA heard everything in detail and with the abutters input, they definitely, it was unanimous vote. And you were there when the ZBA voted three to two. It was a very, a very negative evening from our perspective.
So, every, we all in agreement, but we got to follow the bylaws. So, we, we'll schedule, we'll schedule a public hearing at the, at the early stage and move through it very quickly.
If I could actually add a comment, our decommission payment to Ever, I'm sorry, not decommission payment, our payment to EverSource is actually due January 24th. It's not 22nd, it's January 24th. Would there be a possibility if we can get an ad put in the paper, you know, possibly within the next two days to have possibly a public hearing scheduled within, before that date? I know that's tough and pushing.
We're going to watch Connor do his calendar thing and see, see.
So, because.
John, personally, I don't mind meeting for something real.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I think we'd all be willing to.
And we, and we understand, we know it's been a tough process in going through these past couple of months and we've, we've already received two extensions from EverSource and I'm, I'm still trying to push for another one, but I know it's going to be very slim. So, trust me, I'm still trying.
Chopping at the bit for that.
But, yeah, and I, and I know, I know you guys have been a lot of work these last couple of months, so.
23rd?
Yeah, as long as we make it just for this and make it quick fast.
Matt, does it have to be in the paper? It has to be posted at our town hall?
Paper for public hearing.
It has to be published Wednesday. It has to be published Wednesday, so they would have to get it, I mean.
Can you, can they, can they?
Yeah, yeah, but if there was, if there was a way.
Can they notice it on the back page of the front section and ads there?
Yeah.
That's.
A paid ad, you could do a paid ad.
But they require two, three days to go in in order to do that.
Oh, I thought they had just next day. I, I was about to record it, next day.
They have next day ads, but not legal notices.
Many ads are next day, but not legal.
Okay, that's what I just asked. You said, yes.
Oh, they're not.
Okay, has to be in the legal section.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Just say if there's a possibility we can get it in there before then.
Well, this isn't a public, this, you don't have to continue it to a date time certain right now, so if there is an ability, if we have some way of getting it in so that they do publish it Wednesday, so that we're able to be on the 24th, then.
I don't know if they could do it. I mean, even if you call them tomorrow.
I don't, I don't know either, frankly.
You know, we won't know until tomorrow, until he tries, when they would guarantee.
Most of his check a couple of days.
Because, well, I, and I. Well, actually, the comment too, it's, it would be the same ad as well because nothing's changed from the project since the original ad. So, they already have the ad drafted, which might help with the timeline.
They'd have to change the dates and stuff.
What, yes, yes, I apologize. The dates they would, but it's all, you know, from the last time. They do have it drafted because. Because we did have to repost for the ZBA as well and they turned that around actually within two days. Maybe we're lucky, I don't know. But, but just, and like I said, we know you've done a lot, so.
Well, today's Monday, so if somebody gets a hold of them first thing.
Begs and begs and begs.
I'm staying, I'm staying in town tonight. I'll go there first thing in the morning.
Please. But what's the worst-case scenario? You piss away 120,000.
Yeah. I think John says, I think John says he loaned it to you.
All dead, all dead. We can wait. We have plenty of time.
Well, so what we're saying is if I make an emotion saying that we're available to meet.
Well, let's schedule a meeting.
Schedule a meeting and then we can cancel it, I guess.
Well, yeah, we can schedule the meeting, what, for the 20?
24th.
Third, right?
23rd.
Or the 23rd.
23rd, that's what I meant.
23rd, 23rd.
Because you have to have that in by the 24th.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Select board meets at 6 o'clock that night.
But we can meet before, it's not going to take.
Yeah.
And I think you're single, to the applicant, you guys are going to vote positive. That's possible also, so.
I am too.
Did you guys meet at 5 o'clock or?
Sure, that's fine with me.
Yep, works better.
That, that's fine.
What's that? I'll never make five. Well, how many, we got to have four people here to do it. I'll be here.
Me too.
That's five.
All right. So, there's a motion, Rachel moves to.
Schedule a meeting.
Schedule the public hearing.
Public hearing, I meant to say.
For the.
For Hundred Railroad Yard Road. At 5 o'clock on January 23rd in the town offices. Second?
I'll second.
On those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
5 p.m.?
Five.
Five, okay.
So, I, so I don't see, so you didn't officially submit this, right?
What is that?
That's your site plan application. Sorry.
We resubmitted on the 24th.
Right, but I, I haven't seen the stamped, that's what I kept looking for, is the stamped.
Is it in this? No, no, no.
The actual application.
The new application.
Because I have the one from back in office.
That's why I'm wondering if that's the right.
Well, that's why, well, we have lots of files in there, so John, if you.
I've been going through it. This is the.
We'll follow up tomorrow.
And do they have to, they have to send the mailing out to the abutters, to the, the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Butters too, yeah.
Yeah, so Connor can, and.
This is the EPA environmental stuff.
Hearing continuation request on November 15th.
All right, so Connor, your list is getting long, so if you could just put that in there and make sure we get the officially stamped.
You guys are on what?
All right, and then.
Thank you, thank you.
And so, the things that, just to be clear, like the things we're going to hear about at the public hearing are.
Setbacks?
Setbacks and.
Trees.
Trees, buffer zones, sound issues, traffic, erosion control, and how much the, you know, trucks coming in, going out, all that stuff during construction.
We can do an abbreviated, because it, it was a pretty lengthy presentation last time, but we can do something abbreviated.
I can, I can skip through some of them and whatnot, or we can go through it too, but it was.
Yeah, we have seen this.
It was very.
So, this isn't a, a public hearing, but I'd like to know, is, anybody have anything to say?
I think nobody can do that for us on other projects.
Anybody from public have anything to say about it?
That is so nice.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you guys received the petition that we issued, you guys, the abutters and neighbors that were in favor of the project, there's 35, 30 signatures on it, so.
Do we have, did Priscilla receive that? We haven't seen it.
We haven't seen that.
We haven't seen it though. We really appreciate your efforts on that.
I heard something about it, so.
Yeah.
Well, let me just finish up with him, if I can.
Well, that's part of that. I don't know if that has, the answer, I don't know if that has any criteria in their decision, because they have a neighbor petition.
This is not a bad decision. I'm just asking. I'm, I'm just asking some general information and I just want to follow up. So, we'll, we'll get that, but the most important thing is if, if we held that meeting on the 23rd, if some of you are here or not here, you know, that it goes smoothly, I guess, is really what we're hoping.
That's a very good point.
All right, which is also, yeah, I'm not sure we had that before.
I can talk on that too, yeah. That was from Panning from Landowner himself. I can, I can provide that.
If it's all positive stuff, it probably should just wait for the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
So, if one person or several could show up and.
Yeah, and we can go right through that. All right, very good.
Thank you.
So, if something happens and we can't have the meeting on the 23rd, we'll set a new date. Do we want to actually propose a second date, just in case?
Well, what is, what, what does that do for you?
I mean, make it a day later, 24th is the second day? I don't, I don't know.
No, no, the second date would be if, if you can't get the notification.
Well, that's what you're saying, if you can't get it in the paper. Recorder doesn't accept it tomorrow for publication on Wednesday, then what's that next date? And I think what Matt was suggesting was the Thursday, the 24th, because hopefully they'll, the recorder will.
That's okay.
The two-day lead time. So, at least then, we're as close as possible so that check doesn't clear with the utility company.
Just to be transparent with you guys, so just.
Yeah, I love the transparency.
Yeah, transparency.
It is, that's unusual. You, you all show up, you use your real names. It's very exciting.
What else do you expect?
He's got some funny name on the thing. Who's, who's Nicola?
Nicola, that is, he's actually the, he's the manager of Mass RE 12. Oh, I'll see.
We haven't met him.
He's been here, I think he was here one meeting a long time ago, one of the early ones.
Isn't that the guy with the big horn, Ricola?
Alright, so the fifth, I mean, twenty-fourth, well, then why don't I say?
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-third and then the twenty-fourth is an alternate.
As an alternate date. I amend my, my motion, my original motion to.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you.
Okay.
To reflect a secondary date.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
He said the legal, I don't know, how is he there, he's gonna have to do two lea, no, he's gonna.
No, one notice.
One, and if they don't accept it, then we'll just have to change the date to the twenty-fourth.
It'll just be the date for the legal.
Has the old legal notice, I was just gonna make one up.
It's actually in here. It's highlighted.
And the list of disclosures.
Is the meeting on the twenty-fourth at five P M as well?
It's in one of those folders.
Is that okay?
Yeah, fine with me.
You bring that back out, if, if not.
Because there's a, that's concomitante.
Is it what?
I mean, I can do it five.
Well, we don't have to meet in this room, I mean, it's gonna be a small.
No, 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 I understand that, I understand that.
Right, but we all, we could use, so that's why I didn't wanna do it in the same as the cycle.
So do you wanna do it at five, the, on the?
Five, yep.
Five, both days?
Five's fine with me, too.
Okay. I will be there.
And then the butters should get a notice in the next week or so, so you'll know if it's that Wednesday or Thursday. Great, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
See you then.
Sorry, I wanted to apologize to my cracks, my solar shut off at night. I learned that solar panels would pick up from a full moon.
Moonlight?
I haven't, I haven't seen one watt produced on my.
I've, I've been, my, twenty-two watts, twenty-two volts coming off my.
I wondered about that, yeah. It's the protons that come off from the sun that, that are, that are what does it, I found out.
So it reflects it?
So they reflected the protons back, I wondered, a good bright sunny.
I, I looked at mine several times at night, and it's zero, then I was out there, a full moon, I looked at it, it's twenty-two volts.
Okay, twenty-two watts.
Alright, moving right along.
It's very extreme.
Yeah, but it was there.
That was there.
Well, we have one more item, here's a site plan review and special permit at Deerfield Naturals.
Uh, it works. A letter from my house, I can wait for the furnace oil, light, saw, everything works, batteries go down.
Put that back in the hundred, um.
Oh, we have to read the whole letter?
Hundred, where were you, can you put that back in?
If she gets in there, John.
I shut everything off, and by time I pick up and get out of there.
And we do have.
We have a, okay, I'd like to.
He's leaving.
Oh, yes, she told us nine o'clock.
I'm gonna get started, so that I don't disturb you then.
Alright, but do we know who's, uh, who's, who do you have your money on here?
Clemson.
Clemson.
How are they doing?
Up fourteen thirteen.
Excellent.
Fourteen thirteen, he said.
Fourteen thirteen, they're ahead by one. Alright.
They're ahead by one. Okay.
And the Celtics are ahead by five in the third quarter. So thank you very much, Pat, I'll see you this week.
Oh, we're running it all, you guys.
She doesn't look like she's.
Okay. If we, uh.
That's what she wanted, job working at Deerfield.
If we move this along, maybe we can be home.
Right, alright, let's go.
We received a special.
Permit application.
A, a site plan review and a special permit application from Deerfield Naturals LLC, ten Greenfield Road, South Deerfield. Uh, the description of the proposed use in detail, including square footage where applicable, marijuana retail, nine thousand nine hundred ninety square feet, marijuana manufacturing, two thousand three hundred seventy-six square feet, marijuana cultivation, eighteen thousand six hundred and twelve square feet. Are the applicants available to present the project?
This is not that, this is not that little house, right? I thought so, it's a different one. Because when it said, when it said Atlantic Furniture, that's not the one, that's not.
Good evening. Good, can you just give us a, tell us who you are and what this is about, and we'll see where you go.
That's yours. Working for Deerfield Naturals on the project.
Gotta speak into the mic there. Paul, Paul needs to get this, I know, I'm asking him to speak into the mic.
Uh, Matt Plotkin.
Matt Plotkin?
P L O T K I N.
And you're, are you the guy that signed this?
Yes. Oh, no.
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 So who are you?
Uh, a member of Deerfield Naturals.
Got it.
A member of what?
Deerfield Naturals, the applicant.
It's your email address, that's what I'm looking.
It is my email address.
Alright, can you describe what, what the site plan review and the special permit is for?
Yeah, so it's, uh, we're seeking, we already have a community host agreement from the select board, uh, one is for cultivation, one is for retail and manufacturing. So we're proposing to use two areas at the ten Greenfield Road site, um, so one area in front towards the Greenfield Road, uh, will be the retail section. And then in the back towards the railroad will be the cultivation and manufacturing area.
And have you, do we all have full designs in front of us? Some of us do, or not?
I don't, no, this is, this is for, uh.
This is all.
Alright, so I've.
I haven't seen anything.
And so the feeds have been paid?
Yes. Correct, there's no changes to the exterior or the site.
Well, except they want to be fencing around the, the.
There's an existing fence, there is a limited landscaping plan, but that, that's about it.
Now, Mark Vallone signed this, right?
Correct.
And he's involved with it as well?
Yes.
Oh, right, so what was, what was clear to me, that's, okay, I got an email back on December twenty-first about this, and, uh, it's a change of use, because basically every, every marijuana business that's coming to us is a change of use, because we've never had it before.
Right.
So everything has to come before us, and change of use requires site plan review, so, so it might not be the building itself, but there's all the other parts of the site plan review that we have to.
Okay.
Alright, so we've got, so it looks like the two hundred and fifty dollar check was received, it was stamped. And signed by the town on twelve twenty-seven eighteen. Um, we have some plans. So tonight, we could ask a couple of clarifying questions or something, but then primarily, we have to schedule a site plan, uh, a public hearing.
Public hearing, yep.
For both the site plan review and the special permit. And do you know if, did it, uh, does this, does it require a stormwater, or you've determined it does?
No, there's no changes to the site.
So it doesn't, so you don't think it requires a, a stormwater?
So, and special permit?
Yeah, but the special permit it does, so, alright. So we'll just double check the stormwater thing and, um, and move forward. So any further questions tonight, or are we ready to schedule a public hearing?
Well, just, yeah, I mean, anything right now is moot really until the public hearing.
Well, it's not, I mean, but it's probably excessive.
What's that again? I didn't, what's the?
John's moving, making a motion, I think.
Yeah, well, let's, uh, schedule a public hearing.
For the first Monday in February?
Sure.
So what?
The fourth.
So at seven, we've got the, um.
Berkshire Design will be back in, right?
Yeah, yep. So it'll take an hour, you think?
It'll be hour plus.
If we have all the information from our consultants, it might be an hour, but.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so let's schedule eight o'clock. It's a public hearing, you need to post the time.
Right, I get that, or should we move him to six?
That's what I was thinking. Move this one, this one's gonna be faster.
Yeah. Move this one to six.
Do you think this one's gonna be fast?
It's not a whole lot to it.
Well, we can continue it if it's taking it too long. I mean, you give it an hour, and you could always continue.
APR land and lines and.
There's not new.
Wetlands, I'm thinking, I'm thinking the special permit might always take time, but.
There's wetlands?
No, no.
Well, I'm not saying that.
John's just making a list of what was not.
There's a lot more things, right, 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 right.
Yeah, 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 alright. Oh, yeah, we're just getting to that now. Alright, so does that, do you wanna do six? You think Monday night you get there at six?
I can, six is fine, can you?
You will have a updated set of plans coming your way, um, those aren't stamped, because they weren't, uh, reviewed by the engineer in time to get stamped, so.
Alright.
Good.
So, John Baronis, did you move it?
I made, made a motion, I, I, do I need to, yeah, I.
Who seconded?
Do we really need to make a motion for that?
To, to set the, yes, yes, set the date for the public hearing.
Okay, so February fourth, I'd like to make a motion, we set the date for the public hearing, for, uh, ten, ten Greenfield Road.
Correct.
Site plan review and planning.
Site plan review and special permit.
And somebody seconded it?
I'll second.
And special permit, that is correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
And we, did we decide six or eight P M?
Six.
Six. But then we will try to stick to an hour, um, and if we need to continue it, we can, um.
Yeah, why, why don't we, we don't do that enough, an hour and it's hard.
I agree, I agree, I agree. I, I think that, and I think in this case too, it's new, and we need to see the, you know, go through the plan.
And I, I agree with you, John, that sometimes we have a harder time, I think it's easier sometimes to sit here fifteen minutes longer if we can wrap something up, instead of scheduling another meeting, but yeah, I agree.
I, I, I agree what you're saying, but if, if, you know, if we're going an hour and a half to two hours.
No, I agree.
And then especially if we end up needing more information, that it's not gonna be, be found that night, then it's better to just.
Well, we're probably gonna have to. No, I'm not saying if there's five minutes left to go, then, oh, sorry, the hour's up.
Is there, is there any kind of peer review needed at all for this?
Certainly an administrative, because there's a lot of boxes to check.
That's what I'm getting at, so.
But it's gonna be similar to the other one, but this is actually, um, this will be our first retail in Deerfield, so we wanna go over carefully and, you know.
Right, but I'm just saying, can we, we're probably saying that we're going to, we probably have to continue it from the fourth anyways, so.
Matt, where's your posse?
Well, you know, I actually didn't even know this was happening. I thought I would just get the, the hearing scheduled, and I just happened to go on the town website and be like, oh, I guess I should show up tonight, so. You're, you're lucky you have anyone, I guess.
Well, if you weren't here, we might not have done it, because without the stamp.
You're lucky that.
Without the stamped plans, it's not like, we might not have scheduled a public hearing, but you're telling us we're gonna have stamped plans the next time?
Absolutely.
The other piece of mail, um, that might be relevant here.
For ten Greenfield Road?
No, relevant to ten Greenfield Road. Do you have mail there?
I have mail, yeah, well, yeah.
Is there anything from the Town of Waitley, the zoning, why don't you, why don't you read that, because that's relevant, I think.
Okay, um, alright, I'm not gonna bother with the, the one dated January third, because there's one January fifteenth, it's the same thing. Town of Waitley Planning Board, Waitley, Mass, notices hereby given that the planning board of Waitley will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at six forty-five P M at the town offices for Sandy Lane, Waitley. Toro Verde of Massachusetts, I guess, uh, the third, has applied for site plan approval as required by section one seventy-one dash seventeen, dash eight dot two, and one seventy-one dash twenty-eight dot six D of the Waitley zoning bylaws for the project. Propose to use existing commercial storefront for retail sale of adult-use marijuana on premises owned by Old State Road LLC at four twenty-four State Road, which is the Sugarloaf Shops.
Okay.
So there's an application for a special permit for a, a retail establishment, one property over, uh, from ten.
And according to our bylaws, it's something about how closely these can be, uh.
I would say that it's a different town, though, so it probably doesn't apply. I, I don't know.
You may wanna check with council, but I would say that your bylaw only affects the town of Deerfield.
So in our, just to let people know, what we're looking at is section forty-six sixty-five, dimensional performance standards. Section eight, a minimum separation of two thousand feet is required between marijuana retailers, said distance to be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of each facility to the other.
So we would need legal opinion on this.
I already did. I talked to Adam Costa a couple of months ago about this, and Adam Costa's opinion at that time, okay, which we need to review again, was the two thousand foot thing would apply.
It would apply.
Who comes first wins. That was the last conversation I ever had.
So whoever put in for their special permit first.
Whoever's, whoever got the state license.
Right, it's not up to us, it's up to the state.
Okay.
Get you a piece of property, meaning that they planted there.
Okay, so there's still.
So you gotta go through the process, they go through the process, so who gets there first?
Well, the Town of Waitley does not have that zoning bylaw, so.
Waitley doesn't have it, but Deerfield does, so they can block themselves in Waitley even after Deerfield starts.
I see.
But Deerfield can't block themselves until Waitley starts.
To be honest with you, I would.
Opinion, and we should, Connor, should have it re-reviewed.
There should be an.
Really picking on this guy today. In regards to distance?
No, so we're gonna, we're gonna get town council.
Yeah, it's, it's not even worth talking about.
We need to get it, you need to get it right, John. I got it verbally, we need to get it right. We may need, you may need to change the bylaw if you wanna continue.
Connor, what do you think of your first day?
What the hell would we do without him?
Well, he's had a couple.
Alright.
Yeah, it's not his first.
Alright, so we'll see you at, uh, six o'clock, and you'll bring your team, I guess.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, last order of business is, um, other items.
Well, I think we need to read about the bananas.
Okay, you're, you're, you're on, okay, Rachel, Rachel wants to bring up some mail.
Okay, there's some, there's some mail here that you need to hear about that, everybody, that, uh, Deerfield is looking for a zoning ordinance in order to allow the production and storage of gourmet frozen stuffed bananas.
Oh, yeah, I saw that in the paper.
So just, you're, the background is that Dick and I know this guy that makes frozen bananas, and he, he wanted to locate in Deerfield.
Oh, we could have had frozen bananas here.
It's that Dave, uh, it's that Dave, uh, guy.
We want someone up at the old Masonic building on North Main Street. I'm on TV, so I'm not gonna go any further than that, why with the proper zoning, okay? Where are you going now?
So, in, uh, well, I think at the, at the, at the.
The Franklin County.
No, no, not at the place, it's at the other end of Wells Street. It's an old, it's another old building, so he's.
I pointed him to the start of it.
Was it that Dumont, Dumont factory?
Okay, can we get back to the, uh, the head?
Sorry, sorry, my fault, my fault.
Uh, Rachel distracted us, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So on December twenty-seventh, uh, the Deerfield Planning Board received a letter from LaScatti Development, uh, South Deerfield DG Series LLC. So, dear Chairperson Waite, please allow this letter to serve as a formal request for the following public records in the possession, custody, or control of the Town of Deerfield related to South Deerfield DG Series LLC. Application for a retail store located at the northeast side of Mill Village Road at the intersection of Greenfield Road and Deerfield. So they want public records from April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, through the present day. In particular, they want public records regarding communication between or among town planning board and other town or related government employees or officials, including but not limited to Franklin Regional Council of Governments and Town Council concerning the project. They would like any public, public records regarding communication between or among town planning board concerning the project. Any public records regarding communication between or among town planning board, or any member of the town planning board, or any member of the public concerning the project. Any public record regarding communication between town planning board and their third-party reviewer, tie-in bond, concerning the project. And any public records containing video or audio recordings of any town planning board meetings concerning the proj, the project. And they would like, they said, please provide a response to this request prior to Friday, January eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Thank you, Chad Rubaker. So this has been circulated to town officials, and they are in the process of.
Well, there is a packet there.
There's a packet there that's been, uh, children.
That right there, she does.
If there's anything.
Can you speak into the mic, because people on TV can't hear you, sorry.
So April nineteenth, you said, is that the date?
Eleventh.
April eleventh?
January eleventh.
From, they want the records from April nineteenth.
Nineteenth, that's what I thought.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Through present day.
Through today, through year-to-date.
So that package there in front of you, uh, we do need back, it's our only copy. Diana, put it together, it's correspond, all the things they were looking for, basically. Um, but if there's anything that the board has correspondence between, I don't know, anything you wanted to add to that, uh, we would need it, um, by.
Friday.
Earlier than Friday, but that would be, does anybody have anything that might be?
I mean, I, I get the emails, just like everybody else.
Wait, wait, John, you wanna speak?
No, I, I get, I get the emails from the chair, and just like everybody else, and I read them, and I.
She probably already has most of those included, so I, so that's, that's sort of thing, you probably. She probably already has most of those included, so I think it's that sort of thing, you'd probably find.
If there's a comment?
No, I was going to say, if you have any emails that are from, from you to Pat, I don't know if the town, they would be on any town computers.
I think Pat did a search of hers as well.
And I think she, she's actually having it reviewed by her boss and should get it to the town tomorrow.
Okay.
Anybody else? Minutes, Paul, you've submitted all the minutes. Actually, we should double check that you said come back from...
We've got some September ones missing and we can work on those, but they'll...
So if you can get that one tomorrow and...
Well, I've got what, what Rachel started on the one of them.
I have everything but the comments on that one.
Okay.
The town, town comments. So I've got an informalist so I can, I can put those in.
Are the minutes, approved minutes or?
Nope, they're not approved.
No, they've not been approved.
I mean, we're going to send them the video link?
That's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna be it probably then.
But we can do that.
So I can just say that I, throughout this process, as we do with all processes, I tried to have very limited discussions with applicants of substance in between meetings because that's why we have public hearings and that's why we have, you know, the monthly meetings. So, yeah, any emails were mainly between them. And again, we always CC, that's part of the reason why I always CC the vice chair and the clerk. So those should all be in, and town staff too. So I can't imagine there's anything that's just among planning board members?
No.
I don't know if it goes through the town or it goes through Pat because she was our peer reviewer for the public period, so. But if anybody has anything that's being requested, so, public record wise. So we don't know why that's being requested. But it is, and we like to honor that, so. Alright, so thank you. So you'll follow up, so I'll leave that in the folder here.
Very good, thank you. Actually, I'll take...
And you get, do you get to charge them for this?
So the laws, you can charge for over, you can charge for over two hours of staff time and you can charge per page, but we're doing a lot of it electronically, so we're not planning to charge.
Okay, alright. We ran into this one time, somewhere, maybe it wasn't the planning board, somewhere else.
If it's really onerous, you would...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Connor, where did the 100 railroad street file go? Because this belongs to us.
I haven't, yeah, sorry.
I don't think you need to bring it back out, but just be sure that this...
Any, anything else, something we should talk about? Oh, request, wait, 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 there is one thing here.
Oh, for comments.
Oh, it's a request for comment.
Six coats out.
Six coats out. The type of proposal, special permit to extend a non-conforming structure to allow the continued use of a hot tub deck, seven feet, 11 inches from the side property. The existing house is about four feet from the same property line. And this is the zoning board of appeals. And they must, does the mail say when they're going to?
No, there's nothing in the mail.
January 17th, they're going to have a meeting, so if we have anything to say prior to that, they're requesting to extend a non-conforming structure to allow the continued use of a hot tub deck.
Was that the Polish Club?
Oh, Six Coats Ab, isn't it?
It's over there.
Oh, Julie Whisk.
Oh, the other side.
So do we just say no comment or no problem or no...
I mean, I wouldn't...
I don't know enough about it, I can't make a comment, I don't know.
When we get, when we get them back and people put no comment and you say, well, we need to have something from them, so.
No problem?
No concerns is a good term.
I mean, how, what does that...
They aren't going to make it any worse than it is, right?
Yes.
They're building closer to it.
They're trying to go closer to the line?
Line, yeah.
It's a non-conforming law.
Yeah.
With non-conforming setbacks, that you will make more non-conforming.
You mean it'll, it'll cut that, is he setting closer to the line?
He's getting closer to the line.
Oh. That doesn't sound good.
See zoning.
Well, I mean, that's a zoning board issue, I mean...
I know, they're just asking if you have a comment. Like I say, I don't.
No, our concerns would be ongoing.
Well, Bernie, Bernie will take care of that because it's totally against the zoning, right?
You know, but you have homes that were built prior to, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, you know?
But you don't have to add to them. If they're not, if they're non-conforming, why would you add to them?
It's a requirement to go to the Z B A because it will place that in a more non-conforming...
More non-conforming, yeah.
I, 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 yeah, I would just say...
I don't know if you get a hardship on a hot tub.
Well, if you get a bad vac.
Oh, okay, hot shower.
So do we want to say we don't like making things more non-conforming?
The door's not going to...
I would just say it's make, it appears that it's making things more non-conforming.
There you go.
Yeah. Because it doesn't, we don't have a diagram of where it's going to be.
I mean, that's what the Z B A is for. I mean, we're, we're here to put in front of the voters.
There's no drawing to show where this is.
No, we don't have any...
You just know because they came to you, right?
All you need to know is that it's, it's a non-conforming lot with a non-conforming structure obviously predates, predates...
But it also says to, to extend a non-conforming structure to allow the continued use of a hot tub deck.
The hot tub was put there after the fact.
The existing house is four feet from the same property line.
We put it in without a permit.
Yeah, I don't think we...
You need a permit to put a hot tub in?
When you put it on a deck.
Oh.
You need a permit for the deck.
I just think that you don't want to get in the business and, and, I mean, that sounds like also that there's an enforcement issue that we're kind of piling in on.
Use your best judgment, we trust you.
I was going to put no comment, but now you all make a comment, so I can't put that in.
This applicant is, because...
But I think it's good, it's true, we don't like making things more non-conforming.
Yes, that's it. That's what you wrote down. We don't approve, we don't like make, it's more, more, more non-conforming, it's complicated, more complicated.
Maybe I say, planning board normally doesn't like to make that, now, there's exceptions that...
Well, the problem that I have with variance is that, is that they're forever, forever.
I don't know, the deck's not going to last forever.
Let them hash it out.
Are we close?
So you get the variance for the deck, the deck gets removed, does that variance still stand for a deck down the road?
I would think.
It probably does, right?
Sure.
The variance is forever.
Oh, shoot, another piece of thing. I need, I will need a campaign finance report from you for your activities. Who needs to do a campaign finance report? These are people who were for election last year or this year, or is this, this coming?
Coming up.
This coming year, yep. Who's up, who's up this year?
But this says through the end of the calendar year, December 31st, 2018.
So, anybody who's elected last year?
Members must sign this report regardless of the year of your election.
Okay.
For all those campaign contributions that you're...
Is there a signature page there?
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess we can all...
Let's just sign it tonight and be done with it.
Yeah, go sign it.
So this is the, this is the 20th day of January, I certify I'm a candidate, I certify I have not received...
Yes.
It is, okay. Yeah, I mean, if we could all listen now, that'd be great. You were signing under the penalties of perjury, I see.
Okay. You mean, under your perjury, John?
No, no, you're, you're to your own, to your own individual perjury.
I can sign that too because I didn't get you a check for that contribution yet, so.
Well, they don't count that, do they?
Yep, signing.
Alright, that's what we know. Anything else? We've already set a date for the next meeting?
Yep.
Six o'clock?
Oops.
Six o'clock, yep, on the 4th of February.
Twenty-third.
Oh.
Five o'clock is the next one, yeah, on the 23rd or 24th. Okay, so next, next meeting, you want to list both next meetings?
If you could, let's list both of them, yeah. 23rd and/or the, or the 24th and then again the 4th.
Next meeting, January 23rd slash 24th, 2019, at 5:00 P M.
I'd be here a long time.
No, this is a quick one on the 23rd.
Yeah, I know, but I got to stay here for a select meeting.
Yeah, but they would be on the 24th, then you won't have to.
Yeah. Then I have to go to a SCIMs meeting.
Clemson up 21-16 over Alabama. Celtics up 89-77.
February 20, February 4th of 2019 at 6:00 P M. on that one, right?
Harry Nukken, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved, I moved that we adjourn.
Oh, those, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?